I guess my point, the point I was reaching for was to send a message to that company that I for one do not foresee me ever giving tax payment to a company that according to the draft of the ordinance says that they will hurt our environment, they will hurt the people that live around them, they will hurt future economic development in our county, which is the purpose of tax evasion is to improve economic development in the county. Thanks, Mark. Any other general, what made your discussion? All right. Although we did take strong pull last week in Angeles, determined at that point by two of us a million real powerful development, we probably would not bring anything. Okay, moving on to budget hearing and budget adoption meeting dates. Do you have that information for us?
Yeah, I'll come up to the mic.
Sure, that'd be great. You've got a screen behind you.
I have been in contact with our Department of Local Government Finance field rep and she is going to firm up the date, but our budget workshop will take place during the week of August 6th. So it's either going to be, she feels it's probably going to be the 8th or the 9th, which is a Wednesday or a Thursday. I would need a minority of the council to attend that if you want to. And then also the same for the commissioners, usually there's a minority of the commissioners attending that and oftentimes the council is counsel and the commissioner is counsel attended as well, so that everybody, everybody's exposed to the same kind of overview on what's coming up with the budget. Keeping that in mind, my suggestion would be to have the public hearing of the budget on September 11th and shoot for an adoption meeting on October the 9th, which are your regularly scheduled council meetings at times. So we, the deadline is November 1st. Well, I think 2nd actually would.
Any more dates of year?
Public hearing September 11th, adoption of budget October 9th. Those are just my suggestions. I know last year we also, between the initial hearing and the adoption meeting, we had some evening meetings where you went line by line with the department heads. We can talk about that if that's what you decide to go with, or there's a whole month in there, we could work that out if that's what you want to do.
What time's the budget push out on the 6th?
Well, I don't know that it's going to be on the 6th, it's going to be sometime during that week. It's, and it won't be on Friday because the state doesn't work on Fridays. The, the new four 10s make sense to me. The, so it's probably going to be the 8th through the 9th and it's probably going to be around lunchtime, that's typically when they slate the county for that. But I don't, she has not given me a firm date on that yet. As soon as I have it, I'll pass it along to you. I'll pass it along to the council and the commissioners so they can, you know, decide amongst yourselves who's going to be able to. If that works for you, if those dates work for you, if I can get those into motion, because before you know it, I'm going to have to start submitting forms and, you don't do newspaper advertising for any of the budget things anymore, it is all handled online via the gateway and so, but those forms will become due before we know it, so I'd like to have some valid information from you.
Okay, you've heard the auditors' suggestions. I would like a motion to kind of go ahead and set our public hearing or our adoption of that. So move, hearing, now here's a second, down to the second. I guess my, any other discussion, my discussion is unless things change, those dates will be.
Okay. And if they do change, I have to, I need 11 days notice of any changes to those dates so that I may meet the publication specifications.
And I'm not talking about us changing anything, I'm talking about circumstances that are under control.
Oh, okay.
And I would like to add that the budget committee probably needs to get together right now, I don't know that we have anything to discuss or look at, but I know Gary's working hard on the ERPs hearing, his crew, I think that's on that, and Mark thinks maybe ERPs. And it's basically, that's, that's a big chore and I appreciate you guys working on that, but we've got a committee, I think you're on the committee?
Oh, yeah, we're spacious.
I don't know, I don't know, share with me, yes, I think.
Mark, I feel also, he's an exponential part of that.
But he's, yeah, he's the brains of that, very lively. Anyway, I said all that, I guess we can vote on that motion. But these would be our public hearings on 9/11 and our public adoption on 10/9. All who favor that say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? So that's all we're shooting for, is it?
What are the comment, department heads probably only payroll status quo?
Well, that was going to be my next question. The vendor just supplied me with the Form 1s, they're freeloaded with the 2018 budget data like we owe them and what was actually spent in 2017, you know, so we have current year and past year data to compare the 2019 requests to, kind of like we always do. And so, yeah, I was looking for guidance from you guys about what we should, before I type up this big email and send it out to all the department heads to have them start working on the Form 1s, what you want them to do in the sound section.
With me, sticking my neck out a little bit for the ERPs committee, that's going to drive it and nobody knows what that's going to look like yet, so I think just leave the payroll like it is this year and we will adjust it from there, I think is probably the way to do it, otherwise it just clouds how the, the budget's going to be, because nobody knows what that ERPs, what the ERP committee is going to bring to the council to suggest you do until we get that done, and we're going to get that done.
We don't want to do that this month, I'm here.
We're trying to schedule meetings for Thursday, Dave, if you're available.
This Thursday?
Mm-hmm. All right, so I'll put that in my memo to just have them leave payroll as it sits for 2018 on there?
Yeah.
Form 1s for 2019?
Yes.
Okay. That is all that I have regarding that at this time.
Okay, Jennifer, do you have a time for that, committee meeting?
Usually it's 2:00 before 9:00.
9:00.
Yeah. Please, the only one I hear is very close, Sherry.
I don't see the old business, do we have any old business, Jennifer, that you're aware of?
Oh, no. Not that I'm aware of.
Okay, moving on to staff elected commissioners first. Fisher, you've got anything you'd like to voice? Amy, you have any? Rob? Jennifer, do you have anything else?
Just that we are, we were, we received certified collections from Janet last Thursday and, you know, the numbers look pretty standard for June settlement, so more to come on that information and once we have everything done, we'll get Form 22s out to the commissioners and the council so you can see what your, what you actually did taking. Oh, and another thing that I was going to mention is, I'm going to come back up to the microphone.
So the collections look pretty standard for Thursday?
Yes. Yes. Yeah, fairly standard. I mean, I don't have them all portioned yet, so I can't really give you the, the detail of that. Some of you may already be aware of this, but last Thursday, it was a busy day, we received a memo from the State Budget Agency with regards to a special, one-time local income tax special distribution that Montgomery County is going to be receiving. We've actually, we received it yesterday, I think, and we'll be doing the distribution of that. Basically, there was a problem with the Indiana Department of Revenue's IT system that's used for processing county income tax. So it wasn't reading barcodes correctly when people submitted their 1040s and what have you. So, and there was another issue with regards to nonfilers, but IT problems over at the state meant that we didn't receive income tax that we should have from prior years. So they are doing a distribution to the county as a whole of 185,192.50. Now, of course, income tax, the way we have it ordinance here, we divide that among all the county, basically all the county units except the schools. So what it's going to net is that there'll be $56,000 more going into property tax relief. Montgomery County will get 38,251 more in their certified shares distribution and $26,507 more in public safety lit. So I had the whole breakdown of what each of the taxing units in the county is going to get and I've distributed that to those taxing units, but if you want more detail, shoot me an email about it. So a non-expected windfall for us, a little bit, we'll take what we can get.
Exactly. Thanks, Jennifer.
All right.
Moving on, Janet, Janet, do you have anything?
Just what she said.
Just what she said.
About settlement, that's what I had.
So it went pretty smooth for the most part?
We survived.
Huh?
We survived.
And the banks helping out really took a little bit of you?
Yep, that always, yeah, that helps, online payments, yeah, just a group of things, you know, helps us out, have a different options for them to do, so.
Yeah, I appreciate the banks helping out.
Yeah.
All right, Mark, do you have anything, boys?
The only, the only thing that I have is, I just, I hate to be that guy, but we are still going to have confusion from budgets. And the reason I say that is because of the stipend. So when you say do your 2018 numbers, we actually did not put that in their pay lines, it's a whole nother line, so there's still going to be confusion, so I just don't make that.
Well, just, I would suggest still keeping it in that, in its own little line. You see what I mean?
I don't see, I don't see anybody going backwards in pay because of this ERPs program.
So you want us to leave the pay line at a $1,600 stipend line for each employee for a total amount and then we'll adjust that later after we have the discussions?
I don't see like going backwards in pay.
Okay. I just don't know how to scale, so I mean.
I'm glad you asked that question.
Yeah, we're going to end up being confused at the idea.
We get this thing done and put out some good information.
I agree. Yeah, great, thank you. Oh, we do have our borrowers, our fetish at the jail that we talked about, it was eight, around $8,000 versus a whole lot cheaper than what we thought it was going to be, we paid for that on a compulsory.
So we, once here, we thank you for using that council and.
Thank you.
Excellent work. Thanks for the question. But you, you understood that, being on the ERPs committee and. Beth, session, do you have anything, boys?
I have nothing this morning, thank you.
Amber, do you have anything?
Nothing.
Andrea, do you have?
Nothing, thank you.
Do you have any reports from the central?
Just talks away data coming up next, up to Saturday.
That's good. And they're going to have a size, a size N for the evidence. And the date will be?
23rd.
23rd. Hot to a day on the 23rd. At working your.
What was that, they were just up?
All right, we'll go through committee reports. Starting with Mark, do you have any, anything you'd like us to add?
You know, now that we're getting ready to go through the budget process for 2019, sometime last year, I don't remember when it was, but the two Wauwawash students came up with the, the program to, on the, on the, I don't know, the Homestead credit, that there was some, you know, loopholes, that we were coming up about $6 million short and we're going to look into that. What's been done on that so far, because, you know, any extra money we come up with sure is going to help, because I don't see that changing probably for this next year and the next several years, so just wanted to update on what's going on there.
Okay, I'll let the auditors address that.
The commissioners hired a company to help us with that on a TMA, they've done it for dozens of counties around the state of Indiana, and what they came up with were, there were potentially 53 properties here in the county that were utilizing the homestead deduction improperly. So we've been doing our due diligence, they did a lot of the research there, they used in addition to looking at utility bills, which was essentially what the Wauwawash students did, they looked into voter registration information, driver's license information, marriage certificate, and all utility bills, and basically tracked down where it is some of these people actually live. So what we came out with were those 53 potential people. So we're in the process of making sure that our records are actually right in our system having granted them the homestead, and then send them out notifications that they're eligible or ineligible for it and they get one more chance to prove to us where they actually live, and after that we start billing them, so. And we go back three years and penalties and interest.
So is there a way we can go back and collect all those past years or not?
Right, that, this is the way.
Okay.
Well, well, after they get their bill, they have 30 days to pay it. Once they, if they go past that 30 days, we put a lien against their property.
Is there a statute of limitations of how far you can go back?
Three years, just like anything else, property tax related, we can only give credits for three years, we can only do additional assessments for three years.
So with my very, very, very rough calculation, at the best that's $45,000 if we collected a hundred.
I would not even.
It's not, it's nowhere near 6 million, isn't that correct?
I doubt that we would see that AB from those 53 houses, correct. And, yeah, that's, I'm not even going to put my toe in the water about what we will bring in, because as I said, there's, they still have one more chance to prove all our research wrong. So, you know, sometimes it happens, sometimes it doesn't, so I am not going to be throwing around any numbers today.
I guess my, my point and my rough calculation was that we can't, we can't bank on that as helping us out in our.
Not, not a whole lot.
The other thing I just want to point out with, with deductions is that generally on a daily basis, we are putting on about 25 to 30 new deductions and taking off just as many. So this data is updated daily. So, you know, the snapshots that one may see today are definitely going to be invalid tomorrow. So what we've been doing, that's, that's why it's kind of helpful that we get to go back and look, because that's a frozen snapshot. But, you know, I just want to put that out there and, you know, just for intents and purposes, that information, I don't know if other counties do it a different way or, you know, how other counties handle it, but as far as our county, we are constantly updating and updating those records, so, daily.
Jennifer, on these, what were you finding was, I mean, I know there's all sorts of ways to get around this, although it would be an infinitesum, I mean, we have husband file one exemption and wife filing 1,000 on something else, which is, but where you find a lot of the contract sellers, I mean, what I have seen is that you'll have a, people that are known to buy loans to sell in contract, to sell on contract, which that contract buyer is eligible for the homestead exemption. But I am seeing that the contract buyer walks on the contract, but the landowner doesn't report that that contract's not affecting, so the exemption stays on there until either the house is sold again or something else happens. Of those 53, were, was there a bigger percent of that or was there a bigger percent of?
No, that actually wasn't the biggest percentage of what we found. Outside matches are what we found, which basically means that the person owns property in another state and has real property in Montgomery County that they were claiming a homestead on, which, those were the ones, there were, there were outside matches within the state of Indiana and other counties, there were outside matches in other states. So, and, you know, there were a few people who were listed as contract owners but actually were not residing at that location anymore. It's a pretty good mishmash, you know, and then you have the wife claiming homestead here, husband claiming homestead there, that actually happens also, so. And what, what we were left with was, I think, I think part of the problem with it is that at one point in time, we did not collect very much information from people who wanted to sign up for a homestead deduction. And now that's since tightened up and we're collecting quite a bit of information from people, but there's a legacy there of just kind of a lack of information about these people. And so what happens when people are no longer contract buyers or, and the contract owners, is the responsibility of the property owner to let us know within 60 days of the status change of that property. When they don't do that, some people, that's why we can go back after them for penalties and three years in Texas.
There is, there is a timeframe on that.
Time frame, yeah, 60 days.
The landowner, if his, if their contract was involved, which is a bank, which are going to propose it, but if it's a contract sale, that contract, that owner of that contract isn't going to file a foreclosure, he just got the property back, he's either going to clean it up and do it again or rent it, but that landlord does have a timeframe that he's responsible for doing that?
Right, all, all property owners have that same responsibility to notify us about any changes in any of their deductions. If, if the status of their property changes where they no longer qualify for deduction, it's their responsibility to let us know in 60 days.
Did you find any, maybe you don't know yet, yet, but were any of the 53 unknowingly planning the deduction without realizing that they were not?
I laugh because about half of those would say, oh, I didn't know.
Yeah, that's right.
So who am I to judge, right? I only know what I'm.
I just assumed that there was probably someone to, here's a deduction, but didn't, you know, hit the, there were that many people and it was still far less than what was simply earlier reported from the Wauwawash boys, that, that potentially there were some that were claiming the deduction, not knowing that they were being thrown through.
It's always a possible innocent until proven, don't you, right? I, I, yeah, I guess that's always a possibility. It doesn't matter. Any other questions?
Thanks for that explanation, yep.
Okay.
Jennifer?
I have nothing.
Don't have anything other, back to Jennifer on that. Will, will you, is there a report you can put out of the 53 people, is that public knowledge that you can put out to, to that or not?
I'm going to double check on that. But, yeah, I mean, I obviously have it. Most everything in my office is public record, I don't know why that wouldn't be, but I'm just going to double check on that.
I really have nothing other than I wanted to give our county engineer props for his hard work, this presentation, and I think that shows, you know, what we've got here, he's doing a heck of a job for us and he's way more than just a highway engineer and I appreciate that. And many things, liaison wise, if you know, and, in fact, you haven't heard the presentation for us, I think.
Unfortunately, I do.
Can't get rid of the batteries.
Is this the thoroughfare one, Jim?
Yeah, simple.
Yeah, simple. I'll probably keep it brief, because I know everybody wants to get out of here. What I've been looking at with our road projects, we have actually two different funding mechanisms. The LPA project, like we did on Country Club, reconstructing that road, but that's typically three to four-year process from doing the engineering to actually letting the project get that going. So those are long-term processes. The other is the community crossing grant, which we submit that every year. We've been using that for paving roads. This year, we're going to be paving approximately 12 miles of roads this year. What we're seeing with community crossing grants, it's getting more and more competitive. There is a lot more applicants. The state, last year, indicated that there's 4.20, excuse me, $425 million of requests. The state only funded $300,000. We went in, asked for $1 million, since we're a rural community, state allowed us to have $670,000. So basically, we're getting competitive with other communities. So what we need to do is kind of have a vision of what we're wanting to try to set with the state priorities of where we want projects in this county. So based on that, I came up with a thoroughfare plan. And what you're seeing is in the green is our state roads, our interstates through here. Kind of use part of our frost freeze ordinance and kind of lay out other roads. And then it became pretty obvious where we should concentrate some of these primary roads, which I have shown in black and in, on the map. Then I started looking at secondary roads, which I have in red. This is kind of, state is really saying, when you go in there, we want you to look at commerce for the whole county. We want you to link all the towns in your county, and actually have a real good plan pulled together. So that's what I've come up with. I'm also showing down 231, actually fronting roads through there. That was kind of some of the suggestions. I met with, John and I met with Endot. Basically, they're a long-term planner that looks out 20 years. We looked at the intermediate planners, and then the people that handle things in the first two years. Presented this to them, get them on board with this. One thing that they're looking at is from the existing overpass down to I-74, they have plans to make that four lanes in the distant near future, should I say. As you probably noticed, I think from 550 to 580, the state is actually going to go in and put a bypass lane in this summer, and they're going to be starting that work. So what I started doing is focusing on these bypass lanes.